Alright, it is seven oh three P M. We'll go ahead and start the planning mission meeting for the month of August. Uh, we will start with a roll call. Drew Falk.
Janessa Ruckold.
Allison Miller.
Colin Forsythe.
Kenny Renner Slinger.
Excellent. Uh, first thing on the agenda is to review the minutes from last month. Any comments and or questions from last month's minutes? With no comments, so it didn't entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes for July.
Excellent. Thank you. Alright, so the first item on tonight's agenda is to uh continue with our discussion uh and really treat this as a our last uh kind of workshop on the topic of unit lot subdivision. Um, so we do have a draft.
I'm gonna pull that up.
If you wouldn't mind pulling that up. Thank you, Maggie.
Everyone see my screen now? Awesome.
Yep, perfect.
This is, you know, very, very minimal uh as far as codes. If we want to walk through um. I mean, any questions on the, I I think we kind of went through this once before the pur- purpose statement. Provide a more flexible creation of lots of different sizes and types, including attached and detached housing, such as ADUs cottage housing and similar developments with multiple dwelling units on a parent parcel. So this isn't creating tiny lots without any housing. It's all existing and then um creating those lots um out of the parent parcel. Um, applying only those site development standards applicable to the parent parcel rather than to the individual lots within. So that's the key difference here to a regular standard subdivision. Um. Under applicability, it's talking about um type of short or major subdivision depending on how many lots are created, uh nine lots of short flat and ten or more as a major subdivision. And this would be applicable in all zoning districts. Here it talks about the application process for this type of subdivision. Um, it's processed according to the number of lots created. So like I just said, either shorter or a major subdivision and that's in accordance with the the processes outlined in Title twenty one. Any questions so far?
No.
Uh, so applications for the unit lot subdivision are made on the appropriate forms. Um, that's pretty standard, not nobody all of that. Um, but basically treated like any form of subdivision. Uh, then we get into the fun stuff, the review criteria. Do you guys care if I'm just kind of reading through this?
Call him, just if you want to spotlight kind of what stands out to you, um, that'd be great. Just kind of walk through it.
Okay. Uh, so we we talk a lot here about parent and child lots. Uh, so the parent parcel uh needs to be no greater than one acre. So the reason for this is if if it's a larger lot, they can do a standard subdivision. So we really want to use this for um lots that couldn't normally be subdivided um to say off an A D U or other form of multifamily housing on a lot. Um. The parent parcel needs to meet all the dimensional standards that are outlined in eighteen thirty. So that would be setbacks, lot coverage. So we're looking at that parent lot to begin with. If it meets all the applicable criteria, then it's, it can be subdivided using this this code. Um. The child lots are still required to meet all the standards. So that's uh Title thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So that's our water sewer, our building standards, our environmental standards, our zoning code, um and our subdivision code. Uh. There was a typo on D uh that was pointed out. It should be child lots are not subject to L M C eighteen uh thirty. Um. I believe it's eighteen thirty, yes. Um, so just a typo there that will need to be fixed. Um. Instead of eighteen thirty-three, instead of eighteen thirty-three zero, it should just be eighteen thirty. Um, so that's again pointing to the dimensional standards that were referenced in B. So that's um the child lots now aren't, they don't have to meet lot coverage, set all the standard setbacks because we only are looking at that parent lot, um parent parcel, sorry. Um, so it's in this letter D is saying they're not subject to all, the child lots aren't subject to those standards, but they do need to meet the building fire separation standards. So um typically that's a ten foot separation um with that imaginary lot line there. So if you were to put that lot line in there, if they each have five feet, great. If it was closer than that, then they'd have to have that fire rating. Uh, so that's what this is calling for. Um, which is standard. Um, access, uh each lot needs to make adequate provisions for ingress and egress. Um, which may not include use of common areas or easements. Uh, or may or may, I'm sorry. About that incorrectly. So they can use easements or common areas. Um. Driveways. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this, you guys. Uh. Shall not serve more than nine lots unless they're approved by the city engineer. Um. The portions of the lot that are um common areas. Um. I need to reread this. Portions of parent site not subdivided for child lots shall be identified as tracts and owned in common by the owners of the child lots. Um, and these common areas will be uh addressed in the um in all the deed restrictions. So um, we can't just have a floater parcel out here, everything in this. So if we're going to create these child lots, if there's like a remnant that's under common ownership, it needs to be identified as common ownership and not a buildable lot. Does that make sense? It's um utilities, public works director can require separate connections or private metering for each child lot. There's a may in there. So that's kind of a discretionary uh provision by the public works director. Um, it's saying the utilities cannot cross over child lots without approval from the city engineer. So we don't want the little spaghetti lines everywhere. Um. There has been discussion about why not? There may be a case where we don't require the separate connections. I think most of the time you would want separate connections if they're separate lots. Um, but this may language is in there just to give some discretionary authority to the city engineer. Uh, is every situation is a little unique. So that may give some flexibility. Um, and then when applicable, building maintenance easements um on adjacent lots for external maintenance and repairs will be provided. This is talking about, let's say you have a zero lot line and it has all the fire rating, um but maybe it's like right on the property line or two feet off. We want to make sure there's an adequate easement so that if that person is maintaining their property or their house, they have access around. Uh, that would be like if you're painting, re-siding, re-roofing, just making sure we have that built in um so that there's not a trespass issue later down the road. The reporting requirements are all pretty standard. Um.
Are we, do you want to go through the whole thing before we have discussion?
No, actually, the review criteria would be great to go through first, if you want. Sorry, that would like, there's only one last little bit. It's very short.
Okay.
Uh, so you guys, you would leave the discussion. I just want to make sure and clarify.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you for doing that.
Um. I am wondering about parking. And so while you're going through, I was looking up. Because it says, you know, all of Title fourteen applies to each lot individually.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, you know, each dwelling needs a parking space per Title fourteen. That's great. You know, driveway access per Title fourteen, great. Um, driveways are in Title fourteen, right?
Right.
Um. But I does it say, there's a code saying that the parking space has to be on the property applied because um. I'm trying to, I'm trying to find where in the code that it, there's something about like the parking space has to be on your property. And if we apply that, that would limit the ability to have like a shared parking area
Right.
in like a cottage house scenario, something like that.
I think the intent of this is like under E and maybe we just need to add that clarification. I think under E, we're talking about driveways. Um, this is allowing a drive, singular driveway to serve nine lots. I think that would include the parking and it would just be an easement.
Add like, okay.
Like something at E, I think.
I mean, it could be an easement or it could be part of the tract. And that was my other question is, is the definition of tract that it is not buildable?
That I don't think is clear. But the idea is that it would not be a buildable lot. It would be a tract under the ownership of.
Because then if you say, well.
Or it's a common area.
If there's a common area and it is a tract that is not buildable, then you couldn't put like a
Like a storage.
Carport, storage shed, shared like multi bay garage.
So maybe clarifying area, maybe clarifying what the tracks could include.
Yeah.
Like limited to common area serving the individual lots.
Yeah, or I guess it, is there, is tracks defined? I can look that up.
Yes.
Um.
Those are all really good questions that, and I think the more clear we can be, the better. Let me get there.
This makes it seem kind of interchangeable with lot or parcel. That is, let's see.
Yeah, it's not clearly defined here.
Um, I know it's like in all these definitions, but it doesn't actually.
So maybe, maybe add that to definitions.
Yeah, it doesn't have a ton of, which, um.
I think what would happen is on the plat, you'd have to note what uses are authorized on that tract.
Okay, it would be an individual thing that.
Yeah.
Um. So we don't need.
Because this would have to go through the subdivision process, right? So, but we want to clearly, I
So the, the way it's written is um portions of the parent site not subdivided for child lots shall be identified as tracts and owned in common. Common area shall be addressed in deed restrictions. So that's saying that the common area can have whatever definition is appropriate to this unique situation, but it has to be defined in the um.
In the C C N R.
In the C C N R, yeah, the deed restriction, okay. So then it could say, you know, this tract is for a shared driveway and parking. This tract is unbuildable courtyard common area.
Right.
This tract is for a shared garage structure. So they can just kind of say whatever they want. Okay. So that seems fine. But then, yeah, I think, so that sounds good. The common areas, I, I think that, that kind of.
I do want to know why we don't have tract defined unless it's somewhere under like lot.
There's a lot in parcel that's on separately.
Probably, it's probably under one of those, either lot or parcel. It's probably in that definition. I have a call later.
Um.
Give you a start.
So then yeah, with parking. Um. I was trying to look for like what is in Title fourteen about where parking has to be located so that we because I would think we want to ensure that the parking is not required to be on each individual lot so that there can be a shared parking area.
And I think that is the intent. It's just not right, like you said, clear. Like we're looking at parent part. We know that under the parent parcel, right? All the parking was addressed. So we know it has parking.
Which if Title fourteen is not super specific and Title fourteen doesn't say that residential parking has to be on the lot. Because I know for commercial parking, there's much more specific
Within.
location within such distance, but maybe, maybe it's not defined for residential, so so it would be fine.
Let me clarify, can I clarify that? Research that. With the talk of easements and shared driveway and all that, I'm I think we could put something in there to clarify that parking can also be there can be shared parking areas within such a tract.
Even the way it says the parent parcel and each child lot shall make adequate provisions for ingress and egress kind of makes it sound like each lot would need a driveway.
But then it says driveways can serve no more than nine lots. So and typically that's not allowed in code. We will do like a shared easement for like maybe a flat lot, but so I take that as if you're doing short flat, it can, one driveway will work for all of them. And so I would assume all the parking would yeah, that needs to be clarified.
Is you know, considered a short plot or is it, it's a different process than a short plot, right? Or is it the same? It's a type of short plot?
Yeah, this would be a type of subdivision. Okay, yeah, or a major platform.
Right.
Okay.
The state code refers to it as short plot. At some issues.
Okay.
So the difference here is we're not creating lots to be built on. They're already built on. We're creating smaller lots out of the parent lot that normally would not meet standard. And then when you go into the reporting requirements below and I don't, I won't get into it yet, but it talks about notes that have to be on the base of the plaque. So they know there's limitations with redevelopment.
Yeah.
Things like that. So that people don't do this, tear down, build on type.
Oh, that's, so all the code we already have about short plats also applies to this.
With these specific criteria here.
Right.
What would help is to run through an example of how this would look. And like maybe I pull something that has the restructure gone in now. Look at how would this look and what, what questions might come up if we applied all these standards and where that clarification needs to come from.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, that's, that's always super helpful to um envision and understand what exactly our recommendations look like in practice.
Right.
I'm sure I could, that's basically asking, I hope so to volunteer, but.
I mean yes and no, because it's not, um. It's not changing
What's on?
Development patterns essentially. You know, it's just saying, so you can just say, well, like, here's a house in an A D U. Now you can
Yeah.
make a lot line between them that just has to like where, where you choose to place that lot line has to allow for access, uh fire separation, et cetera, et cetera. You know, or you can have a I mean, you could have a duplex.
This would work with.
And you could, it would work with a duplex if you have firewall.
So long as that happens, okay. Um. So like in, and are there instances where there might be A D Us that have been like that are grandfathered in without that amount of adequate space?
Oh, yes.
And then what, what would it look like for things that already exist? Is that just where the words may allow for some discretion or?
Because it's not, I mean, lot.
Well, this talks about like, well, they have to meet fire separation requirements. So that would mean retrofitting that portion. If, if, let's say the built structures were too close, you'd be.
They'd have to replace an exterior wall.
Whatever your fire separation requirement would be for these older.
Change of the siding.
Because right now, like in a, we, we talked about this with condos and duplexes and how it's um hard to take an existing duplex built you know, seventy's or something.
Nineties.
Right.
Probably.
Um, and convert it to condos because you would have to like rebuild the shared, you know, you, it would be a major remodel.
Right, right.
Um, and it would be the same for this that like, you know, somebody has like an attached A D U or an A D U that's only six feet off of their existing house, then you would have to build firewalls for the separation there.
Okay, and alright, that makes sense.
Current, anything current now that would built in, sort of required through either energy or fire code.
Yeah, but you can't, yeah, you can't like like you can have uh two structures on your own property that, like my house and garage are only seven feet apart.
Yeah.
And like I built that not that long ago, right? That's allowed because they're both on my property.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't be able to put a lot line in between the two because they wouldn't have ten feet of
Right.
separation, which is fire code for structures that are on different parcels.
Okay.
So it's like, see, so you can't, you know, something could be sort of grandfathered in. Um, or so, or just existing that you wouldn't be allowed to subdivide because it doesn't meet the right codes for.
Okay, without some retrofitting, without the beat costs. Perfect, sure. Um, with regard to the setbacks and stuff, like let's um like like my, like my house was old and uh there's stuff that's, you know, definitely not ten feet off from like like right now there's an attached garage and then there's the house. Say I want, say somebody were to build an A D U on top of the garage. Um. Would that be something like so long as that were built to the fire standard code, then that's something that could be done even if it doesn't meet setbacks with respect to the street and the edges of the property.
The way I read it is it has to meet setbacks. Like the structure itself has to meet setbacks or each structure has to be conforming. And then that lot line that comes into play.
Okay, yeah.
They don't meet the interior setback there.
Code cannot be applied to non-conforming structures.
Got it.
That like, yeah, like old houses in Love and Marth that are only like two feet off the property line. It's like, well, sorry, you don't get to use this part of the code.
Got it. Um. That actually probably has because some, a lot of the bigger lots do have the, are the older ones, so well, some of, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just good to know. Thank you.
Point G utilities.
Yes.
Know, so I brought it up last time and I feel like there was a little bit of back and forth.
Yeah.
Um. About making sure that there's some language in there to protect it for future adaptation in U G A. Um, I know that there was concern this might not be applied to the U G A, the county might not adapt it. The way that I read the state interpretation, it's every city is about a county. So I think potentially this, this could get adapted. So I just wanted to make sure we have some language in there to protect against misinterpretation.
Okay.
If I could do simple as or applicable utility.
Okay.
Just to future prove it.
Yeah. I think what may happen in the U G A is uh because, and we'll kind of hit on this, is a lot of the counties don't adopt the subdivision codes for uh for cities. They have adopted our Title seventeen, I think back fourteen or sixteen. Uh, so with the next adoption, maybe they will choose to not adopt this and they'll have their own subdivision code that applies in account.
True.
Uh, but I, I like the idea of just keeping it.
Doesn't cost us anything.
Right, clear, clearer is better. So we don't run into those same issues of we did previously. So I'll come up with some language and obviously this all gets found by legal, so.
Perfect. Any other comments from planning commission? Put it after the audience, the discussion points, questions, thoughts, ideas.
I wanted him to come up just so we can hear all the.
I don't really.
Can, can you state your name, please?
Uh, Richard Sellers, Richard Sellers. Um, so on each, uh, the only thing I could see there, when, when applicable, building maintenance easement on an adjacent pot or maintenance and repair shall be provided, um, it just became subjective. Um, so typically you're five feet off the property line. And so I'm just, it's the subjectiveness of this. It can hold up a whole project or a neighbor could say that, well, you need your maintenance agreement, you know, um, your, um. Yeah, so that's, that was just what I don't like as a builder is ambiguous uh situation. Uh, I've never seen that before and um typically we won't build if we can't, you know, you can put scaffolding. Usually you ask your neighbor, hey, can I put a ladder in your yard to get up to the second story? And they usually say yes, but if they don't, then you just have to do scaffolding or work within your five feet. Um, but you know, I, I can't imagine a building that's going to be two off the lawn, maybe in the commercial zone though, because I'm only thinking residential. So that was the only thing I, it's again, I just look for ways that somebody else can take control of a property you buy and cause a problem that, you know, doesn't need to be there. The other one was on the, um.
Before you move on, I do want to touch on that. I mean, is this a little bit redundant with point A and seventeen? With access easements, is that not more or less covered there?
That's right.
Disagreements?
Access easements is more like driving, like, like driveway and fire access, but I do agree that H is unnecessary and could just get a little confusing. And I know that like some council members are like, wait, what, what the heck?
So how do we clarify? I guess I'm thinking of it in like, it was a duplex and for some reason you needed to run your half, but you needed, I don't know, I think it's.
But it's like a normal, a normal duplex doesn't have that, like condos don't have that. Or condos, like everything is common ownership, but, but it's like the five foot setback.
It, it's covered in the access easement.
Parent parcel.
Um, I guess.
Access easement is a reporting requirement versus a.
Yeah, but if, if in your C C N Rs, it's typically, hey, if I need to go into your unit next door because the water line is running through there to night line, my, my unit, then I, you're, you can't deny me access. Um. That's what the access easements are about. Um, but, but this is more like a neighbor. The H was, to me, it reads like a neighbor. So, um, you could stop the whole project by saying, somebody would say, ah, you know, I think you're going to need a maintenance agreement. So you need to go get an easement from your neighbor to get access to maintenance your property or else we're not going to let you build.
So you mean a neighbor not affiliated with parent child.
Correct, not affiliated with parent parcel. Because parent parcel, you're not going to be able to build anything new that doesn't, it, it will conform to your setbacks.
Yeah, I think this was supposed to be just for the inter- internal lots. It doesn't apply to the exterior.
So on internal lots, they're covered in the C C N Rs. They have to, they are, they were, your C C N Rs were already written. But really what it says is, everybody has rights to get across everything, to fix any utility and who pays for it. Like if I have to go in somebody else's unit next door, damage their drywall to run a water liner to fix it, I have to pay for their repair of their drywall in your unit.
I, yeah, I feel like it would be the same as like a condo association being like, you know, if you have shared walls, you have to be able to repair your side of the wall.
I can ask where this came from and if, yeah, if it was a legal thing that was put in, um.
I guess it does seem like.
Point, you don't want that one neighbor deciding, I don't want to have this next to me. You're not going to have access to my road star. So put a ladder, so that that would jam up a whole development, so.
I think it was just, it was in there more as for staff to check the box, like are there any easements required? Make sure they're on the plat, but.
If it's, if it is required by legal, I think can we just define it to the interior lots only?
Yeah, so when applicable, the maintenance easement on interior lots within the parent parcel.
Yeah.
And I would say even building maintenance, like you know, with the utilities, it says utilities shall not cross other lots without approval. And it's like presumably the city engineer is going to say, well, to approve utilities crossing the lots, you need a uh easement.
Yeah.
For that. So I feel like it would be the same that if.
So this is a building maintenance easement for external maintenance and repair.
Yeah, that's kind of.
But it should be in the C C N Rs.
But again, like city doesn't, I mean, we require C C N Rs, but we're not, we don't.
You know.
So this would require it to be like in the plat notes, not C C N Rs.
Yeah, through, through the plat.
Yeah, we require it, but we're not responsible for what's in it. Yeah, we require it, but we're not responsible for what's in it.
And you should, absolutely, you should.
So I wouldn't be saying, I'll make sure you get that easement in there.
Sure. Yeah, so.
Let me check with legal on why that's in there and if I'll, I can drop the version with and without it, if I can update the language, sorry.
Perfect, before you move forward, I want to take the questions here.
Ron Duncan, at People and Court Gas Game. When this came up before, the concern, I was on the other side of the builder. On the, on the adjacent lot owner's concern, wanting to protect that, whether that clause. Would force an adjacent owner to allow a maintenance easement. But from what your discussion and that, and the idea was no, a lot, an adjacent lot owner would not be required. To accept an easement on the property, they would have to purchase their, however that, to put that on an adjacent lot. So I'm not sure the discussion now, it's, it's moving it to the internal, because all of the discussion previously was that it was. External and then it, it seems that it would be predicated on how close can these in this. Process, how close can those buildings on the smaller lots go to the outside line? And if, and if, and why would you need, and if they can't go any closer? Then a certain distance, then why would you need an adjacent lot owner's permission? But if you can, like you've got zero lot line building now. I don't know how close you can get where you would need that maintenance to service the siding and. And get up to the roof or whatever you need for that building, so that's. I just, the discussion previously when this came up, I think at the council. It was, that was the, the concern that whether an adjacent law owner would have, would have to allow it. Because it was in this code and the response was, no, it would have to be negotiated and may not be allowed. And then they'd have to change what they did on their own lot to get it inside of their own area. So I don't know if that confuses things or helps.
No, I think there was just some confusion with the way it was written. It's supposed to apply only to the new interior of outlines, not to your neighbors, so. Because the, the structures that are existing on the parent parcel have to meet setbacks, so they have to be five feet or more. From the property line, so they wouldn't need an easement for maintenance, because they'd be needing their standard setback. Uh, so this was more designed to, for those structures that are closer together, that are going to be fire separate, either a townhome style or a duplex. Or an ADU, where once you put that lot line in, there might not be a lot of room, so they might need. An easement between so that they can paint their house without. I, I, I think the intent was there to just, for the routine maintenance, you have access through that. That's my understanding of what the intent of this piece was. Um, but I can tell it's. A little confusing and maybe not necessary, so I'd like to at least check with legal and say, if we remove this, is that a problem? And you know, it could be, I mean, we review short, standard short flats and flats all the time and we see things, like I think they're going to need an easement for that. Yeah, utility crossing a property line or you can ask for an easement, so I think it's something that if it came up, we saw an issue, we could ask for it.
That's been a good, good clarification, I, I think it's going to come up further in discussion.
Yep, it's come out twice, so.
But also, that point, but the primary use of this, right, is for existing structures.
Yes.
Not for development, right, so people in their minds say, oh, oh, all of a sudden you're going to make these tiny little flats and then. Put a million houses on it right next to each other, no, it's, it's existing houses that meet current setback requirements.
And just, just out of curiosity, does this apply to commercial buildings too? If we're just, we just tend to always discuss it within the, from the length of, the housing standpoint, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, I mean, the purpose statement is to provide.
Okay, yeah, it's, it says housing.
It says for creation of lots, so I think it's really more geared toward multifamily and housing, but it is allowed in all. Well, in all zones. But it's in typically in those cases where they couldn't do a standard subdivision. Uh, in like multiple zones, it's zero setback. Um, they typically would do a condo for, but um. Similar developments with multiple dwelling units on a parcel, so I would say this typically, if this, the way I read the purpose statement is. It's more applicable.
Just for how?
Housing.
Okay.
I can clarify that, though. But that's how I read it.
But it could work for a commercial building.
I would think a commercial building would just do a standard subdivision, because they don't have a minimum lot size and they have a hundred percent lot, I mean, most of them have.
Hmm.
No setbacks.
Okay.
Full lot coverage, so. This is more of that tool to use when you can't follow by for a standard subdivision, because maybe you're a six thousand square foot lot and you're in RL six.
Okay.
So you want to split that ADU or you have a duplex and you want to split it down the middle.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the difference with this is that you own the land too versus a condo where you're this and everything else is.
Other states that have done this already, really the intent was to take ADUs and make them individual units.
They do this in. In Shalane with townhomes, they require townhomes to be the individual, in line individual lots, so once they're built, they have to go through a subdivision.
Interesting.
So I did a one more, on the, I'm just curious on number eight, uh seventeen, uh seventeen dot zero three zero. Um, A. We came up with the number uh as nine, I'm just curious where that came from, like, is that just a state?
Yeah.
A state thing?
Yeah, so state defines a short subdivision as nine or fewer lots.
Okay. So that major subdivision before, I never realized it.
Yeah, that was a change, though, it used to be four or fewer.
Okay.
Oh.
And then it increased to nine within the last couple of years, thank you. Maybe less than that year, I think we changed it.
I've done sixteen unit, it's the largest I've done, and I don't recall, I didn't go through a major subdivision. So my point was, and that was not on a major one that was on. So I was just curious.
And that was a unit lot subdivision?
Due to lots subdivision, that, I mean, was it ten years ago, I'm not sure. Pardon?
Plan development?
Nope, it was just a. Yeah, I didn't even have to go through a design field. Did, did that, but just straight on the unit box, I don't think I did two unit bots. Maybe just one, but so my point is, I think you need. Set a number. And then I, but I don't know, I'm seeking an alternative because.
And that's consistent with.
Under short subdivisions, but it wasn't limited in the number of units. Maybe it is, because sort of, so. Believe the one, I think nine would be plenty for this town, that's a big development.
Wait.
Unit lots.
Where does this actually limit it to nine?
It doesn't limit it, it's just saying that, that there's two different processes, so if you want to do nine or fewer, you go through the short subdivision process. You do ten or more, you go through a major.
So I don't know what the cost of the major subdivision and the benefit for simply building townhomes. And so you might later on, a big amount of cost, that doesn't need to be there if you're trying to open. I will see, we're forced out of the title. Even, then that's my concern for that. I, I just haven't done major subdivisions, so I'm not sure how much more of that's decosting extra work.
I. As far as a processing standpoint, I mean, it, it goes through a public hearing versus approved administratively. So there's just more public, in, it's, it's not decided by the city, it's decided by the caring examiner. Uh, it may require CIPA.
Wow.
Uh. So.
That's huge.
But that's, that is the, the state law for sub- subdivision.
I have to talk to a surveyor and get more data on that. It's like we lived in another category outside of shorts of, uh, you know, lots of additions. Lived in a different category, or I don't know what I'm talking about, so sorry, but, but I just know we did bigger ones than this, didn't go through CIPA and we didn't. Have a public hearing.
You can also do. Multiple. Subdivid, like.
Yeah.
Multiple short flats.
Yeah, do two floors side by side and create two different unit lots.
Or if it does, it's kind of like a condo versus a unit lot, that's a mighty site plan here and. In some jurisdictions, it's just reporting of a survey, it's just a duck deal, so if they use that, the condo provision instead of it, I don't know. Do you guys want to, I don't want to move too fast, um, did you want to look at the recording required, the note required plat notes? At the end here?
Any, any further questions or discussion around? The application process or the review, review criteria? Not, yeah, I can.
Can I just? Forward and forward?
Please.
I'm going to follow up on maybe clarifying the access and parking requirements. Because it called out title fourteen and it might be easier to be explicit that it can, parking can be an easement, does not have to be on the child. And then, um, I'm going to talk about defining tracts. Um, work in something in the utility section for some language review within the UGA. Um, and then remove H completely, um, if, if that wasn't something required by legal. Or make it more clear so there, we don't have these kind of questions.
That's great.
Did I hit on everything?
That was everything, yeah.
Okay. And then the definition of tract.
Yeah.
Did you do? Oh, I'm sorry.
I got that. I just want to make sure before moving on that I caught all that. So then, do you mind if I move on to the next section?
Please.
Okay, so reporting requirements, this is stating that any unit lot subdivision that we do, um, when it's reported needs to include. These items, so all access easements. And if it requires a joint use maintenance agreement, if it's an easement, that's going to get reported at the same time as the subdivision and it'll have CCNRs. Um. And which will include information on the maintenance and common areas. Landscaping, the typical CCNRs, so I guess as staff, I would just make sure that they touch on all these things. Um. There will be a note on the plat that approval of subdivision was granted, um, by the review of the site as a whole. And then site file number, um, subsequent plating actions, additions or modifications to the structures may not create. Or increase any nonconformity of the parent site as a whole and shall conform to the approved plats. So. I guess if one of these lots was big enough to be re-subdivided, I don't see that happening. But. It's just saying it can't create a nonconforming situation. Um. Uh, additional development of the individual lots may be limited as a result of the application. Of development standards to the parent lot. Is that clear? The other one?
Okay.
Uh, additional. I'm sorry, I'm struggling reading, um, note stating that if a structure or portion of the structure has been damaged or destroyed. And repair, reconstruction or replacement of the structures, all of it shall conform to the approved plat. I said my contacts are kind of winking out.
Hey, so.
Oh, on F?
Yeah. Okay, a note that additional development of the individual lots may be limited as a result. Of the application of development standards to the parent parcel. Let her G, if the unit lot subdivision includes an accessory, accessory dwelling, excessive, why can I say that? Accesses. Accessory. Accessory dwelling shall be labeled on the plat and that such ADU shall remain regulated as such. I'm not doing it.
I need, I need to do what the, the point of labeling or maintaining the labeling and.
I, I was, I was going to ask the same question. Also, D and F are the same thing.
Additional.
Yeah, yeah, so you're just delete one. The parent parcel, yeah, that's weird.
Well, they changed lot to parcel.
So are those, are they consistency, which one should we keep? Which one is more consistent with the language we're using in the others?
Well, F doesn't have the typo at the end, does it, comma instead of.
This is a.
I'm, I'm, I'm so kidding, man.
Keep, keep off dropping.
Okay. I mean, it's unit lot subdivision, so maybe we should use the lot terminology.
Yeah.
Talks more about. Parent. I mean, I think there is a definition that like. A lot.
Difference between lot and parcel.
Yeah, the difference between lot and parcel, I forget which is which, but one of them is like when people have like a triple lot, it's one parcel. But three lots, but if their owns the same, by the same person, then you can like ignore the lot lines in the middle and let's choose to like to back that up.
Okay.
It wasn't.
They did.
Yeah.
But I think we always call a parent parcel, parent, I, I haven't really.
Okay. Child parcel. Sort of parent parcel and a child lot?
I know, let me. Definitely shouldn't matter.
They do.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you get, it can get down. Yeah, and we, and we're kind of mixing, because this talks about referred to as child lot. But then it says relation between the parent parcel and each lot created. So. I mean, I guess that kind of makes sense, if you think of a parcel can include multiple lots.
Yeah.
But a lot is, uh, as small as. Small as definition.
So this says lot means, this is in our municipal code. It says lot means a fractional part, a part of divided lands having fixed boundaries or a single parcel of land. Located within a single block, which at the time of application for a building permit is designated by its owner or developer to be used, developed or built upon as a unit. Under single ownership or control, be, being of sufficient area and dimension to meet minimum zoning requirements for within area. The term shall include tracts or parcels.
So our code uses them interchangeably. Um, but I would like to go, like, I'll run through this for consistency and if we're calling it child lot, make sure it says child lot everywhere. And if we're calling it parent parcel, we call it parent parcel, I think that. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I, I'll do a fi- find and. That's all. Um. Child.
Yes, going, going back to that last point G.
Yes.
Looking at the Spokane code, which, what this is. They have a whole section F, accessory dwelling units, and they have three points in the third point. So there's two, two qualifying criteria about utilities, one about recording child lot. Um, and then the third one being legal description of a lot, an accessory dwelling unit. Shall be identified on the unit lot subdivision. So I think that was just a requirement for that section. So I would ask you to check with legal if it's necessary, but I, thankfully, but I don't see the benefit of it.
I mean, it seems like. Because how is it still accessory and it's on a different lot?
Exactly, I'm like, if you label it, that's on the plat.
Like, what is an accessory to?
Yeah.
If it's on its own lot.
I find that confusing.
Yeah, it's, it's associated with this carve out.
Then you're like, my primary residence is an accessory dwelling.
Is it saying that ADU shall be regulated, so like if it was originally permitted as an ADU and now it's on its own lot? You can't, if it was already twelve hundred square feet, you can't make it bigger, like, the idea is not increase that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a carve out for their additional requirements that have to do with utility lines, owner's office.
I, I'm guessing that might be the reason is like, because we're looking at this as like the parent.
It's more about.
Parent property was, parcel was originally a house and an ADU, if we do this. This was the ADU, it can't, it has, it's regulated under the ADU criteria, you know. Okay, even though it's. Even though now it's a lot, because. Not really an ADU anymore.
Yeah.
So it's saying. It's, so I think we should just look at different language, that instead of saying it. The ADU shall remain regulated as such, it's like. Kind of rephrasing it to be like, if it was an ADU prior to subdivision. It shall conform to the.
Standards.
The like supplemental regulations in the zoning code for ADUs.
And I think maybe the reason they asked us to label it was so that by ten years down the road. How, if I was processing the legal meter or something for this, how would I know that that is under the ADU regulations? Unless there was somewhere that said like lots two, four.
Unless there was somewhere that said like lots two, four and five of the subdivision or region are structures are held to the standards of accessory dwelling.
Yeah. So I think that, like saying, you know.
Add a note to the plat versus.
That it has to be noted on the plat that certain structures may need to conform to the ADU regulations as opposed to like it's actually an ADU. Which is sort of a weird distinction, but it's like legally not an ADU anymore because it's not accessory.
What if there was just a note on the face of that that says, no, identifies which lots were originally struck, the structures on lots, blah, 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 were originally permitted as accessory dwelling units and and.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a.
I get what it's trying to say, because the idea is like you couldn't go in and create a six lot subdivision right now.
To keep it on your twelve hundred square feet.
To keep it in that size and that way it's more affordable, right? Because if then we do this unit lot subdivision, somebody buys it and they add three thousand square feet. It's no longer needing the intent. The intent here is to have smaller lots with smaller homes that are more affordable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
So I think the language could be better, and I don't like the idea of labeling it on the plat. I think if there was just a note calling out which lots specifically were the structures on these lots are regulated are held to the standards of accessory dwelling units. For whatever code section.
Yeah, because basically the, what would apply? It's really should be no more than one ADU per building lot or home site converted from a single family structure. So that is like, well, if it's on a different lot, then like that doesn't really make.
It doesn't make sense.
Then um, it requires one off-street parking space. But that's the same as the zone, hundred square foot, single-family residence. So it's really just the twelve hundred square foot rule.
So, so could we just call that out specifically, these lots are, I mean, I've I've seen notes on that for other reasons, but say, give a size limitation. I see why they have it in there. Because we're trying to use this as a tool for smaller lots with smaller homes. So people can have a starting point. Um, and so we want to kind of keep it within Yep, those parameters.
Yeah. But I need to fit the lots big enough, they with that with, hold them from adding another ADU? If they're already considered ADU or would they, they'd have to apply to build a primary residence on their short plot?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the other thing is that the unit, the parent parcel has to meet the underlying zoning code, which means that you can either have duplex or you can have a single-family residence in an ADU.
But.
As a parent parcel.
But that will change in two years.
You can't have.
But it's gonna be two ADUs.
Yeah, I guess it'll be two ADUs. Um. So then you could say, well, on the plat, like only one of the three child lots can have a structure over twelve hundred square feet. Like, I don't know, I feel like there's a lot of ways to like.
Yeah. I know what they're trying to get at.
To that, but really I guess oh, yeah, that's a good question. Is it, is it necessary to have that note at all? If the parent parcel has to meet all this zoning code at the time of subdivision. And then once you subdivide it, you're like, well, legally it's not an ADU anymore. It's not accessory to anything, but like when it was subdivided like it had to meet that standard. But then, yeah, I guess you would have to have something in the flat now so that somebody couldn't like add on, add on to their ADU and make it twelve square feet.
Wh- wh- why wouldn't like? I mean, assuming they can still meet all the setbacks. What if somebody, I mean, what if somebody bought their ADU and then wanted to add on and they, then they have room to do that? Is there a reason why we'd wanna prohibit that?
Basically, just what Maggie was saying about like the, the intent of this uh, encouraging smaller.
Yeah, but, but if, but if we, I mean, say somebody buys that with a certain budget and then, you know, it if they, their, their needs change, but say everything else has gotten more expensive. But they have the option to, you know, add something on. I mean, it's like, I mean, I, my understanding of the affordable housing thing is that we're trying to make it possible for people to just get on the ladder. And then it might be, you know, more reasonable for some folks to just stay where they are and expand if possible. I mean, it is is, is that.
Yeah, I don't I don't really have a lot of concern
Yeah.
About somebody being like, oh yeah, I bought this eight hundred square foot ADU and I'm gonna add on to it. Now it's gonna be fourteen hundred square feet. Because that goes back to this, like, um, I was like chatting with C about this, about how there's, there's a lot of theory, like we're working with my theory and it's really, really hard to say this is what will actually happen, or this is what's even possible. Because when you're working with like this theory, like anything is possible in a way.
Yeah.
But in practicality, when you look at like what, what is the lot size, once you've, you, you know, you have your six thousand square foot lot and subdivided it to the an existing single-family residence, and then an ADU, and the ADU is gonna have a smaller lot size than the other, just and then you have to have all your setbacks and your lot coverage and everything else. It's like, you just can't make it that big.
Right.
Like, I mean, you're, you're just gonna push up against lot coverage and setbacks on the parent parcel and height, and it's like, it's just not going to be feasible
Yeah.
to fit. You know, you can't fit two, two thousand square foot houses on a six thousand square foot lot and meet all of the, some of the requirements. It's like, just not possible.
So.
So I, maybe we.
Would the, would the, would the preference be to remove G?
Yeah, so I would, you could take it to legal and ask them if it's required.
But can this be removed? Uh, so then going back, just for clarification, uh, A is pretty straightforward. B is saying that this subdivision was granted as a review of the whole. So we're looking at house ADU or house two ADUs in the future. Um, subsequent plating actions, additions or modifications to the structures may not create or increase any nonconformity of the parent site as a whole. Does that?
That should.
Take care of.
Yeah, cover it. Even if it's not.
Cause that's a note on the plat.
Legally defined as an ADU necessarily. It's still like if you have a parent parcel, that's.
If I were reading this plat note and I got a permit and I'd be checking all my plat notes and I'd be looking at increasingly nonconformity of the parent sites, and I always have to look at that parent site.
Yeah, to be like, well, this is the one that was the ADU at the beginning. And, well, I guess, say you had cottage housing.
Right.
And well, cottage housing is totally different. If you, say you had, like, my house is only eleven hundred square feet and my ADU is three hundred square feet. So I guess technically if we subdivided it out, we could turn the three hundred square foot ADU on its own parcel into a sixteen hundred square foot house, because our house could count as an ADU because it's under twelve hundred square feet. But it's like something, even if you go back and modify it, something on the lot still has to be under the, within the ADU size.
It's, it's just, it puts, um Yeah, it, it needs staff really needs to.
Yeah.
I don't, and I'm thinking like how many people are gonna come in for an addition right away? But I, I think that right there can eliminate G.
Yeah, I think C is gonna limit the opportunity for a developer to come and see the opportunity, okay, I can buy this tiny house with a smaller EDU and flip them to two major houses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it, that would
It wouldn't adhere to. So complicated, so.
It is.
Any other questions, thoughts on review criteria?
If that helps, thank you. We'll come back with something.
Was public comments?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Please, you have a comment?
Um, I, I, it's, it's, it's Yeah, so I'm gonna try to, um, propose something through the city council and to you guys that I'll work with your peers. I just think we're going at this, if, if we're supposed to supply housing, we're trying to stay with what we got and protect what we got. We can't, we can't increase housing. And there's a beautiful subdivision in town that it's, you know, this puts four units, plus you can maybe have an ADU and one or two of them. So you could have a total of six units on two lots and they look good. And it's already been done in the city side by side. And if we go and try to capture the land and stick, okay, you can't ever touch this ADU, we draw circles around it. You can't maximize efficiency, and these houses look fine. They look, they're cute and they look fine. You can't maximize the land you have. And so I think by protecting an ADU right now and codifying it is is a long, long-term use. And I think, and I, let me get my act together. I'll go through Drew. I'd like to make a presentation in, in about a month and try to explain why I think the best job we can do is develop units, but make it look, make it look pretty, prevent the townhome of these square things. And, and that is something that I love to see if you guys agree. But I need time to create visuals and stuff.
Wouldn't that be cottage housing?
It's, 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 they're townhomes. They're town, they're right up over here. I can't believe it. They just, it's all it's all done some street up there. I took photos of it and everything. But anyways, I, I.
I'm, I'm curious, where is this? Is it on, uh, tires?
Um, it's.
Like behind the main housing?
I, I've got.
I think so.
True, it's true. I don't want to get in trouble with you.
Those condos, the skeeblick condos?
It's easy to get in trouble with Drew. You gotta watch out.
What if I pull up a map, right?
Um, yeah, I just, uh, I'm sorry, I have just a second.
I'd like to comment on G while he's. Yeah, please, please. So the, the one comment was made was the assumption that the ADU would be separated onto its own lot. I don't believe, I don't, is there anything in this unit lot subdivision that requires the, the ADU implies an existing structure on the lot? Is there anything that requires the ADU to be separated from the existing structure rather than I mean, could it still be an ADU and then cut off other parts of the property?
There has to be a part of the property that has a structure on it. Like this doesn't create a, a lot without a structure.
As an ADU. So the ADU designation in G was about an existing ADU.
Are you saying like, so say you have a six thousand square foot lot that currently has a house in an ADU, can you like create sort of a third or have, have the house and the ADU on one lot and then additional development? Like sub by that for additional, because the parent parcel, so which the, you know, lot size is minimum is six thousand square feet generally, it's some exception. Um, so that parent parcel can only have the number of structures that are allowed by zoning code.
Richard, Richard, show Maggie some.
So there, there are properties that have more. And I didn't see anything in there that required it to exist, that you can be separated onto this whole lot when you apply unit lot subdivision. So if it's not required to be separated, it would still be an ADU, would the note still apply because there's still an ADU on the lot, it's just saying.
Yeah, no, that was just applying to like if an ADU was separated onto a second lot.
That's not, this was actually reporting that there was an ADU on the lot, on the lot that it needed to be still recorded as an ADU, that it wouldn't suddenly possibly be. And I didn't see anything that said it was required to be put on a separate lot, so therefore I don't know why they don't.
Well, in the, in the purpose of the state's included for attached and detached housing. So the whole purpose of the loss of vision is for dividing existing structures.
Dividing existing structures, not allowing for new structures.
No. So it's no increase in density, it's just taking what is allowed by code and just putting a line there so they can be sold separately. No, no, no. It's a good question. Cause if it's not clear, we wanna make it clear.
So you can't demolish a house, build? Uh, you, you'd have to do it separately, right?
This says that if it's destroyed by whatever means, you have to rebuild it if it forms with the plat, so if it was a
But I don't think you can master plan. I'm gonna, you know, lots of vibe with the intent to
Well, you can do that, like, okay, say I, you know, you wanna do a cottage housing development. You can design your cottage housing development with the intent to do a unit lot subdivision. And you don't have to wait until they're actually physically constructed, right? It, it would be, it would be an additional uh, approval process. It'd be like, this is the cottage housing development. And this is how we will unit lot subdivide it. But like, you have to have that site plan of like, these are the actual structures and where they will be located before you can get.
And I don't think we would report proof. I don't think we would report a final plat until they're all.
Two. Oh, really?
Yeah, we're not gonna create a, where you can't sell a lot that doesn't have, has a whole intent to existing structure.
Can't get bigger financing unless you have a lot subdivision is done. You can't get financing to build it.
Yeah, I thought you just kind of have the, like, the binding site plan had to be I didn't think that.
I'll have to fill. Just, I'll have to double check. In jurisdictions I'm familiar with, they can process them concurrently, but they don't create the lots until the structure is done. They get their final occupancy and then they
Like, that's, is that how they do it with condos? I mean, with condos, you have to, because they're like, they're shared walls. So I guess that would only, that would.
If you look at the applicability, this applies.
If you were financing the units individually as opposed to as one development. Right?
Done?
The, as long as, I, I just don't know if the banks are gonna buy off, they want the security of knowing their, you know, the individual lots are existing. So, that at least that was my issue.
Yeah, you would think that you could think would be approved. Even if maybe it's not like.
So then how do we do the review of the parent parcel though, my compliance is they not.
Well, you, you review the
I guess as long as they don't change anything, right?
Yeah.
Assuming everything stays the same.
Yeah.
And they'd have to be something that's already approved, so I just wouldn't want, I, I guess. Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can like, do a unit lot subdivision and then let people like
Do zero lot line.
Individually build on each lot at their whim, because
Yes.
Sufficiently regulated process when you're dealing with the, all of the shared utilities and land and blah, 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 blah. Like, it has to be developed as one. I mean, it's like, um, zero lot line. Those have to be
Built at the same.
Built simultaneously. So, so that's like an approval process for two separate lots. But part of the approval process is like through a lot line thing, so they have to be built concurrently. Even though they're all separate lots. That's kind of comparable.
Yeah, so I guess when the unit lot and the building permit is issued, the unit lot is okay at that point, but they won't issue a unit, unit lot until building, building permits issue. Because that's, that's what we can build though.
Right.
Right.
But then there's also the language, it may not create or increase nonconformity, so that kind of insulates from
Yeah.
Anything crazy happening.
Yeah. So, yeah, I guess if, if it's like the the subdivision can be recorded once the building permit is issued.
That's the.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna check. Again, I I'm thinking of worst case scenarios, right, somebody gets a building permit and then they're like, oh, I. I don't have the funding for it, I'm not gonna build it now, and then we have this subdivision and. Building permits expire after six months, they're not built. And then what best, I don't know, it, it gets tricky, I'm I'm getting some, that doesn't always happen, but we have had a few that we issue and then they expire like. Three years, they call and I go on it, we didn't state my permit, like you didn't do anything.
But that's for like a single family resident. Right?
Are you talking only cottage housing?
Oh.
I'm thinking.
Oh, it's basically a house A D U.
Yeah.
I was thinking mostly this would be relevant to cottage housing.
See, I see eight A D U in primary, I I see.
Oh, no, I not like where it will be applied, I'm saying whether or not, like, I think it will be applied to existing. House A D U or duplex scenarios potentially, but it could also be applied to. A cottage housing. Development, like someone could build cottage housing with the intent of making a unit lot subdivision, be like, okay, here's my whole plan, like, I'm gonna make sure that like. My permit, my like building permit will conform to the unit lot subdivision requirements so that we can do that process nearly concurrently. Um, so that, like, once they. Start construction, they can also be like selling those units individually.
Sure.
But they were very permanent, so it would have to be built as one development.
Didn't we have in the cottage housing, the special review process? I thought we added it.
This building, I think.
Maybe that would get taught in that process. Didn't they could, you know, say, okay, if you're gonna do this, then you're gonna, you want to do unit lots of vision, here's how it needs to be done. It might be covered into that cottage housing language.
Is that in the code?
I mean, it would, it would be. The. You know, the developer essentially would have to ensure that they were. Meeting those sets of regulations when they planned it. City's not responsible for like whether or not your cottage. Housing development can be subdivided.
Yeah.
Like you have to. But but then that's the thing, it's like, well, then if you build. A cottage housing development. It could be really hard to go back and subdivide it if you haven't planned for that from the beginning because of how utilities are done.
So, Megan, do you have enough from us to?
Yeah. Uh, some of it I just want to clarify with legal and I want that clarified in here that it could be done concurrently, I want it very clear so that. There's a change of staff, we apply this consistently and that there's no. Well, how do we, you see what I'm saying, I want it to be clear to the applicant and clear to staff on how, what works, what doesn't.
Excellent. So we did, we, you said you're never leaving.
But your, but your guys' preference would be, it shouldn't matter, right, that. That if a building permit is issued, then they can report the plat versus waiting for the building, buildings to be. But completed before reporting. Because they can get preliminary approval, but. I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm asking the right question, so I put on here, can unit lot subdivision be reported after building permit is issued, question mark, versus final? Where's kind of my question?
Yeah.
Because it isn't clear in like the capability or purpose statement that this applies to. Existing structures only, yeah. So maybe that's left that way for a reason.
True.
I'm just not as familiar and I don't want to.
Right.
Mispeak, so, um, I wrote that down as a clarifying question.
I'm just thinking of it from like the designer's perspective of like. I wouldn't. I would want to like. Design a cottage housing development, be like, well, I think we can do it, you know, lots of division, we'll find out, you know, it's like you want to make sure. Like that it's. That it's actually approved or well into that process when you're going into it to ensure that like.
Right.
It um will happen as planned, essentially.
Any other questions on. You know, lots of division, because I would propose.
Oh.
That we. Clean up these few points, but then um set this up for public hearing next month.
Can I get? If I can get individual feedback from you guys, if I get something put together early enough. For you to look at before the hearing.
We could, yeah, we could.
Can we do that?
Be right before the hearing too.
Okay.
So we can make any more cuts, make further into.
That would be us. Okay.
Yeah. Excellent. Uh. Draft public participation plan, what this is.
Yes, so we're required to have a, the public participation program, it's part of the comp plan update. Um, it's not required to come through you guys, but.
Thanks, sir.
But I, this is a very rough draft, I already went through it and found mistakes. So I think I just wanted your eyes on it as like, we're, we're trying to meet, we're meeting the, the minimum requirements per the state. Um, I had Kara, she did a fabulous job kind of making it more fun to look through versus. Draft, I think the, the one I looked at from the last compliment update was like three pages, no, it's just a word document. So this is to get people's attention and get them excited to want to participate. Um.
That's cool.
So I guess I just wanted more of your eyes on it for anything that may be. Needed to be clarified, it's basically letting the public know what, what's involved with comprehensive up update. Well, comprehensive plan update, who does what, um, what kind of outreach we're going to have. Um, there could be more outreach, but I had to put the minimums in, so we're gonna have these meetings, we're going to have, we have a. A community visioning coming up with the mayor in September and October, there's gonna be three, um, one is a housing visioning, one is. Um, economic development or, I can, I can all that, it's a, it's in here, hold on. Sorry, guys, it's getting late. Of course, oh, sustainable tourism is the second one, and then accountable stewardship, so that's more of like how to protect our rivers, trails, natural. Environment, so those kind of were the three big things. That uh have been really important to the community and so those are the three that we're gonna focus on, although in the cop man, we're, we're touching on more than that, but. That vision process process is just kind of the initial. Kickstart, I guess, to the cop plan update, um, I, I'm working with Burke Consulting right now, uh, to. Um, work through some grant funding opportunities and have them help through the, guide me through the checklist. But um, that's gonna really be the bulk of what you guys are gonna be working on for the next, probably all next year. Um, our goal, if you kind of look through here at the timeline, where is that page?
The end?
Yes, page thirteen.
Third.
Um, we're trying to push this a little, so it's due in June of twenty twenty six, we're trying to get it done a little earlier, earlier, only because that's. An election here and we love for the current council to work through this and be able to vote on it versus get all the way through. Potentially have new council members that want to part of any of it and then ask them to adopt it. So that's the goal, this is not a set in stone timeline, but it would be great if we could have an adopted document by January of twenty twenty six. Um, that way. The, the council we have can work through it, uh. It 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 just gets a little more challenging if you get new council members in and they're here at the tail end and they haven't been involved in any of the discussion. Moving. Uh, I I guess what are your thoughts, is that too, do you think we should? I have not been through a cop plan update. Um. I think it's doable, but it means. Yeah, I'm gonna get some guidance and help. Push forward. But um, I don't know if you guys had a chance to even look through this, is there anything clearing, I did find little errors here and there that I need to clean up, but. Are you comfortable with me moving this to the council to adopt?
I think we don't have a choice.
No, but I want your input.
This is, there's other things I would rather do, but.
Oh, then other things you'd rather do than update, huh?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't.
But there are, there are new state law, I mean, we have to.
No, this means we have our other priorities are not being addressed, but that's how it is.
But they can be, they can be incorporated.
Yeah, they can be.
Because we're addressing housing, we're addressing a lot of things.
It, it sounds like an opportunity to comprehensively assess.
And getting, I mean, and there are some things that we have to work into our new update and into our, it's development regulations too, it's. So we have to adopt our comp plan and, and our development rights, so this is where we are going to have to allow two. Two A D Us per lot. Um, we're gonna have to address all.
Condos if they don't get passed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's all the state mandated thing, so our housing is gonna be, and it. Luckily, we, our housing action plan is pretty current, we'd need to update it a little, but we're lucky we went through that in twenty twenty one. Um, so a lot of those goals are still applicable. Um, but it's. I really am going to appreciate your grace through this process because it is very new for me.
I have nothing.
And I'm relying heavily on you guys to.
Couple questions, so I looked through this, I, is all of it. Going through uh our review and then the council?
Hmm.
And then. I'm just thinking going through these phases because it is. No pun intended, a comprehensive. Process and plan.
Hmm.
We will, and. So there's like the visioning and blah, 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 but then once we start getting into. The drafting and public comment and all those. This is what I'm wondering is, I know this group has gone to two meetings a month. Which isn't always ideal, but I'm wondering if there's times throughout that we're gonna have like increase.
That would be it.
I mean, we'd have to figure that out, but I'm just looking at the timeframe and I'm like, if we, if we actually have enough time to go through.
Yeah, basically, we're looking at like trying to adopt something in less than a year and a half.
Right, that's fairly large.
Which, how long did the housing plan, which is less comprehensive than the comp plan, like how long did that take, that sounds like over a year.
It was a long haul, um, I'm hoping to get some assistance, uh, you know, we're, we're hoping to get the grant. Uh, we got, per grant, we have to find the process of like a hundred thousand dollars. I'm hoping to use some of that for any additional study updates and for basically a consultant to help. Run through this, um, because it's not something I can take on.
Right.
Um. But. I mean, I think it's. Yeah, it's a lot, and again, this is a, this cannot be amended at any time, this is like a working document, it's not a set in stone, this is what we are. It's just to let the public know about the process and that we do want their opinions, I'm working on a. Survey that's going to go out on housing, um, and I have to get a draft to the mayor for that, uh. Just trying to get more public outreach, like, because this is supposed to be a joint document with the community and making them feel like they're involved in the process, we do want to hear from them. Um.
Maybe, maybe this isn't the right place for this, but I think at some point we need to have. More or less a pictogram of how. The planning commission does its work and the workflow and then how it gets passed to, and what it does and doesn't do and how it gets passed to city council. I feel like recently we've.
I mean, we have.
Done our process, but then we've had to add additional meetings because. Oh, we didn't know this was a public hearing session, we didn't know that happened here, we didn't understand this, or is there, are we commenting today versus publicly doing our record there?
So this is more, yeah, I think that's important.
I think there's opportunity.
Yeah, because like we do a year worth of, and I, working on this and then the council is like, we need a workshop, it's like.
And we'll hold extra workshop, like. This process will require extra workshops, it may not be a. Something everyone has to attend, but like a community workshop to get more done and to educate and, you know. I I want to make it kind of fun too and try to get more people to be engaged and so. I'm gonna try to reach out to other jurisdictions to be like, what do you guys do, what has worked, what doesn't work? But so there will be our standard meetings, but there likely will be more workshops and.
And then some, some of this is gonna be rolled out like, um, in, in portions?
Yeah.
I mean, that I was gonna say, it's not like we're gonna do a full draft of the thing and the city council is gonna have to review the thing in its entirety.
What?
I mean, it's, it's, we're gonna do installment.
I mean, they, they adopt it all in its entirety, but I, I would envision, and I haven't been through this process. So I will correct myself later if I'm wrong, but I would think we focus on the big, like, the stuff we really, that's gonna take the most work first. Um, some of it, we may not need to address much, um, but work through those chunks, take them maybe to the, to the. I could even, like, I'm even thinking study sessions with the council, this is what we're working on, do you have anything you want us to address that, we, we don't want to get to that point where. We're ready for the adoption and. So it is going to be working through like housing.
Yeah.
Working through the economic development chapter, the new climate resiliency check, that's a whole new sub element that we have to adopt, it's meant we haven't ever had that before. But I am working uh with the county right now at the hazard mitigation plan and we can adopt that and incorporate that into this, so it will make it a lot easier, uh. So we won't have to do all that analysis that's required, it's already basically been done. Uh, but, you know, I'm, I'm excited to have some guidance and so it may be that if we get a consultant there here to use every meeting, they're helping run this, um. Because I apologize that I'm.
You're, you're half staffed for your department, it's okay.
Well, normally, I mean.
Even when we did the housing.
Yeah, normally a consultant comes in and do that.
Yeah, it was just not enough, enough manpower to draft it, so, and, and I. I think you'd be in a good position if somebody that does that full time stepped in and helped, and then they're getting our feedback as what we need as a community. Um.
Totally.
So, um, so again, this public participation program is required, it has to be adopted by the council, I just didn't want to. I wanted you guys to.
You put more eyes on it, I, I think it's great, um, and I, I think it is a very user friendly, um, thing to review and it, it does look. Uh, it's a lot more engaging than a soulless three page word document, um, I think Kara did a great job, I think you guys are. Um, I mean, I, I actually think this will be kind of a nice opportunity. And especially because most, a, a lot of the, I'm excited that there's gonna be a, a, a climate resiliency and hazard mitigation, because the things everybody keeps. Whenever the topic of planning commission comes up, all I hear about is fire and water, I was all, anybody has to say.
And, and fire is huge, I mean, so.
Yep.
We should have the, the county should be adopting the hazard mitigation plan by the end of this year, so we'll already have that to be able to then take to our city council to adopt. So it will have already been adopted and we'll just incorporate it into our comp plan. Um, and it addresses a lot, all those.
Yeah. But I, and I, I also think it's a, it's nice that there's a. Um, a, a big priority for a public involvement because I, I just think that'll, that'll make Leavenworth a. A happier place to be.
Yeah, the visioning, I actually sat down for a meeting to kind of discuss how those meetings are gonna go, and I think it's gonna be really cool.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we get a good turnout, because we really want it to be more hands, like. Roundtable discussion, what do you see, what do you want, what's working, what's not, and, and, but. Under the premise that we are all here because we love this community.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be kind and respectful of others' opinions and it's not a yelling, it's like.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have that big announcement before. That, that we're here because we all have the same. Goals, right, we want this to be. A very good, and how can we get there?
And I, I did appreciate the note where it says, um, you know, sure, it'll be an engaging place for tourists, but also. Keep it nice and pleasant for the people who live here full time, because it's.
Yeah.
It, it, it hasn't always, um, been perceived as. The priority to make it a, to, to continue it being a nice place for full time residents.
Yeah.
So I, and those are the notes I.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you guys' eyes on it, um, I'm, I'm gonna make some little. Tiny corrections here and there, but I'm gonna pass it along just so we have it conducted and just know it's a fluid document, we can change it at any time, so if we're going through this and we're like, hey. We are gonna push this out and our timeline is actually gonna be June. That's great, we, I, I'd rather plan for like, we're gonna get done in this time and. Have a goal. And not be an overachieving.
It's, it's nice to have buffer because inevitably it will get postponed, I mean.
And we, and our drop dead date is June, so I'd rather be planning for January and then we're delayed for any reason, we have some pushing.
Yeah.
Um, and then I was just gonna touch on the, this is on the planning mission, um. Um, and then I was just gonna touch on the, this is on the planning mission, um, our website that talks about who the members are, how they're structured, what does the planning commission do? Um, when do you meet? Uh, what's the process? What's proper meeting etiquette? Uh, this is more for people that don't, like the general public, but I'm wondering if there's something I can pull out just as a reminder to uh council.
Not to add to Cara's plea, but I mean, I think then to Drew's point, something along the lines of an infographic kind of to illustrate. Um, you know.
Like talking about like, we get the docket for the year.
Yeah.
This is from the council.
We get a docket from council, we review, we hold workshops, we hold a public hearing. We make recommendation to city council. City council takes up.
And and also the the caveat for if somebody like pays for something to be addressed sooner, um, you know, that that's understood as uh 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 something that exists and the rationale for it so that people don't think.
It's a, it's a type of application, just like a building permit. So like, if somebody comes with a building permit, I'm tasked with processing it. So.
Right, right.
Comp plan or a development code update, we process it and we have to follow
Yeah, but inevitably, inevitably, every public hearing or what I guess to give a council half the time, it's where did this come from? Why did they decide this? I feel like we're missing, we're missing opportunity to.
And I would not, like, if we're talking kind of about what's going on right now, um, I would like when we have, we do have they can choose to adopt it and I'll adopt it this upcoming week. But I think acknowledging that that particular item, yes, we got an application, but it was in our twenty twenty one housing action plan. It's been on the docket in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and it was moved in priority to number, the number two slot in twenty twenty four. Um, and it just.
It wasn't.
Inclusionary zoning has taken a long time and it's complicated and I don't or not gonna have much time to even discuss it. But it's it's gonna be more challenging topic to get through. And so why bag everything else if we have things we can get through? So.
Correct.
But I think the public doesn't always know that how long it's been on the docket or that this has been a discussion at work and just because of this one application. Yes, we're processing it now because we got an application, but we've been talking about this for three years. It's not new. And it's now become a state law that or that we have to adopt. So that was just kind of, we were pushing forward with that as well, knowing that it it's gonna be adopted. So.
Yeah.
Just throwing that. So I'm sorry we got off topic, guys.
That's good. Um.
Do we?
Do you want feedback on the that document like right now or later?
No, I mean, it's in the packet. If you, I'm gonna make some edits. If you guys happen to see anything that you think needs to be added or clarified, just shoot me an email. But I'm gonna send the final to the council because I have to get it adopted like soon. And we're not having a, we're only having one council meeting this month, so it won't be till September. So we'll have some time. I can bring you the final draft of the next one just to have eyes on it if you want to.
That'd be cool.
Okay.
Um, the next subject is inclusionary zoning, but uh to Maggie's previous point, this one is
complicated.
Yeah.
Um, so let's just do this. Have you all had a chance to play around with the calculator a little bit?
I don't know that I really understand the calculator. I'll have to do some. I mean, I I messed with it, but I it's for me, it's it's hard without some some kind of examples of here's what went into to this thinking.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. It's it's really complicated. And it has the need for a tool like this to even run all of the inputs and outputs and all its ability. Um, let's maybe just do this really quick before we adjourn. Uh. What? So if you look at the the incentives, so Maggie, this is really kind of for you to help me out.
Can we pull up the website?
Pull up the calculator.
And if you're me, like me, I did launch, I tried to create an account. I never able to make that work. So just always go to explore a guest. Um, and then I did, I'm here to build a case. And really here is either this low-rise condo would be like a smaller apartment complex. We're not gonna have any mid-rise or high-rise based on our height limitations. So if you're looking at multifamily, this is where it would go. You could do de-chatch single family and try to play with that as well. Um, but when we're looking at inclusionary zoning, it's gonna be mostly multifamily, right? Um, and we do have a strong market here. Um, enter my new project. So this is where it just takes a little research. It defaults to um thirty units per acre. Um.
Which low-rise.
Right? So so it's just changing some of these, like how many base units am I going to have?
Yeah, so I think that this stuff is easy enough to kind of play around with and and use some of that in our judgment. What I probably would like to really just pick a review, if you wanna go down the incentives. I just wanna kind of figure out which of these.
Oh, sorry. I just was trying to break down. So what's kind of cool is if you go to more, you can choose like how many one-bedroom, how many two-bedroom, how many studios and their sizes even. So you could really break down. You could even take something that exists, like, hey, I'll pull the building permit for one of eleven like house apartments. It was this many units. They were this size. It's on this acreage. If we use this tool, how many could be affordable? Uh, without, anyway, sorry.
Yeah.
I digress.
Good point. Um. Yeah, go down the incentives. Which of these would we even have the ability to?
Probably only this and maybe some fee reduction.
Parking, parking reduction, fee reduction.
Parking, I mean, we would require basically one per
Mm-hmm.
And but parking is what takes up most of the lots. So if we're trying to incentivize it.
And we already, we do have a parking reduction for housing that's for uh under fifty percent AMI, right?
But I hope you ever went below one. Like, it didn't always require one space maybe per unit. Which I think like if there was an incentive to like, if you build X number, one or two, there's not parking, but then does that create a parking problem?
That that was my, because I remember having that whole conversation.
That.
And a bunch of people, I know some people who were like, we should just have part reductions regardless. And then there was a lot of people who were like we should never ever have parking reductions. I was like, I live next door to two of the three affordable housing, well, three of the five affordable housing developments and the actual like section eight housing that's like income qualified below fifty percent. They don't need that much parking. Uh, it's like one car per two, three residents.
Right, but that's not fair.
But that's, but that's when it's a hundred percent. Yeah, but that's.
It makes it more challenging. So like your reduction will be very minimal, probably. I mean, you'd have to look at.
Yeah, but I, but I guess like as opposed to like a parking reduction for a whole development, it's more like if like, like units that are below a certain AMI can reduce their parking.
Sorry.
And and like that would be like.
Sorry.
Then that.
So.
So I don't feel like.
Can you see that better? I'm sorry.
In theory, we could play with parking reduction. Theory, we could play with fee reduction.
And streamline processing. That's like staff will take only three months to review the permit versus.
So those are really the only three incentives that we without going outside of our scope. Good.
That's your bonus.
That it won't really matter because if we're looking at this, this would probably only apply in multifamily and
Right.
commercial.
But in multifamily, it's still.
I don't think it, I think there's a minimum lot. So there's still a lot size like a two thousand. I thought it was just.
But we couldn't get into like the tax abatement conversation.
I mean, we have the multifamily tax exemption already, but.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I I think that helps kind of set the parameters and then now if you, we can take some time between here and next meeting to play around here and work system scenarios and.
It would be awesome if, and this will take a little education on my part. I apologize. Um, you know, looking at like what would be an at a site based on what we have, what would be a site area that, like, if there's some parameters we can all use and then play with them. You know, maybe a site that's two acres and a site that's and what what's out there right now.
Right. The the only thing I saw, I kind of played a little around a little bit. There's a one point one four acre lot available right now. Was the biggest I saw.
And we're looking in multifamily and commercial. Really?
Yeah.
Um, but you can play around with unit numbers. So if they were one-bedroom versus, you know, a bunch of bigger two-bedroom.
What do you, Alice, what are you defaulting to uh cost per square footage for your build?
I don't think I can give you a good answer because I do custom homes, which are like four hundred dollars a square foot. Um, apartments are going to be a lot less, but I don't know by I I can't really give you a number for that.
Like if I reached out to somebody who built these, they could probably give me some. And if I can email you guys out, like at least you have some of these like.
I guess so. Numbers based on reality.
Cause I I was playing around with it and I'm like two hundred and seventy here.
Yeah, I used three hundred. This kind of number I was looking at, but that could be too high, but.
And then there's the financing rates. I mean, a lot of it is guessing. So if I could actually get some solid numbers and then you can play around with, okay, if they did this many units in it, it and we did these incentives, then it pencils out. But I was, when I was playing with it, I kept, I had to go up to like a mass number and then we got like three units. And to get the profit, it was like five percent of the units. And so even starting at thirty units as your starting point, making five percent affordable, you get one, two.
But everything I've read and I've talked to a couple of people, it's probably more useful to get money out of their units.
Yep. And then you have to put that into a program and it's, we just want to have a program. And that's, that would really.
That is a toggle on here. You can.
Yeah, but that seems like a practical solution based on the stuff that I've read.
Giving them an either or option.
Talk to.
You do this.
And based on what I've read, if they have any of those options, one hundred percent financial.
And then it would just.
What they choose. Yeah, they choose the.
To pay out and then we invest that into more than housing elsewhere. Working with like men or some other program.
Cause like, I guess that's why I thought I was maybe doing it wrong because I, it was all just very discouraging. There were basically no scenarios that were practical for the city of Lebanon.
Not until you like take away parking and you take away these things.
It it just looked like a bummer, so.
And I I went on to NRSV and I've been researching, trying to find other ci- it's very hard to find cities that have adopted this that aren't big, huge cities. I was like Federal Way, Red Redmond, Kirkland. They're big cities. They do high-rises and everything was in that commercial zone. And like we don't have a lot of commercial and multifamily vacant. But, um, but it would be nice that if they, in lieu of they have, they pay in and then that goes into a fund and we have something to work with, break, figure out what what that number is and.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Multifamily does say two thousand square feet.
It still does. Okay.
Pretty long, you know.
Good.
So you could.
So there could be. That's the gap. Because the Lebanon House does commercial.
Mm-hmm.
What about the former middle arc? Isn't that multifamily stuff?
I think so.
So do they actually only have one unit per two? I mean, that might not be unrealistic if they're not it is only two stories and with the bottom parking.
Mm-hmm.
And everything.
And I wasn't.
Maybe it does have two thousand square feet per unit.
That'd be interesting.
So I do just want to preface here, right, that we could probably slice this thing into June next year and try to find the one unicorn which just works. I wanna make sure that we're being thoughtful of our time as well, that this is a very, very hard puzzle to solve. And we have very limited levers that we can pull. So I wanna make sure that we do the best that we can with the time that we have, but not let this sink frog us down forever. If I don't, I honestly, it's tough for me to see a lot of scenarios where this becomes useful. Yeah.
I was researching a couple of other codes today and what their options are. Like here's our inclusionary code and here's the incentives and here's the buyout option. Like if I brought some of the, I mean, it's still just like examples. We still have to get some more, but would that be helpful?
Yes.
Pull what I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was even trying to pull other city, like other, I mean, they're usually bigger cities, so we have to obviously adjust based on us and what works for us. And that's what I read is it's very specific to sort of case by case.
Urban environments would, yeah.
It's more, it works well in urban.
Yeah.
For me, is there anywhere community, so eight thousand people or, you know.
Yeah.
Five thousand people who have done this and if not, then.
I was trying to find even even other cities in other states that have maybe, like I pulled the city of Boulder just to, because they it's very expensive to live there.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just didn't get a chance. I printed it. It was tiny. I can't read it. So but and I just, what they will pull today, I
Oh, yes.
Apologize. But if if I could pull some examples together and get them out to you sooner than like your packet that we.
Especially the smaller the city.
That's it. It's just taking some time to research and and pull that. Um, the bigger cities do have, at least you can see what other areas in our state have done.
Yeah.
It gives you kind of a layout, but.
But I feel like the scale of development will be so, but that it would be hard to move on.
Are you okay with other ci- by other states?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, totally. We're just looking for love.
Yeah, okay.
Well, like, yeah, like I'd be more interested in what those small towns do with inclusionary zoning. And if they don't, then.
I might have to make some phone calls.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Diligent.
I'm gonna try to pull some examples together. I'd love to try to go through this and do some research and pull like some numbers that we can all use. If we want to even play with this, or would you rather get some examples and?
I think we should use our own personal time uh to play through the tool and then if you can provide examples next time, then.
Okay.
Did Shalane have something?
I don't think they had anything adopted. They had done a development agreement with Widener, I believe, and I might be misspeaking and this is recorded, so. Yeah, but I think they they tried to work that inclusionary zone into their development agreement. And so that's how they got like I think they were gonna pay out a certain amount per required unit or something.
So you could ju- so they don't have any code that applies to everything, but they just kind of.
I think they had that case because there were some, you know, it was an agreement with, like they they allowed this if they did this kind of situation. So some of the.
So it's a very so that's really useful to know though, that you can do like a a one-off like you know, if a, if a developer comes to the city of Lebanon and is like, hey, you know, I want this exception and I will
do this.
Do, you know, I'll give you I can't leave for your affordable housing fund or I'll include affordable
Yeah.
units. Then like it, you know, it doesn't even have to be a code because.
Where's the code? One sentence. Here's the process.
Right.
Yeah.
But it is hard because not everyone needs a special thing. I guess what we're trying to get out of acquiring, like any after you hit thirty units, you have to do this next number. I, but I I have wanted to reach back out to them and see what, if they're working on this too. If this is something that is being pushed, is there a similar, I mean, you can figure this out, but very similar situation there.
There's no hundred unit development that's happening now that doesn't go through council meeting, right?
None of them go through that. They're building.
So there's no special.
It goes through CBA and a building permit. Then it goes across the council. I mean, unless they need some kind of special.
Even then, even if they want uh variance, if that doesn't go to the council, it goes to a varying example.
I think examples are good.
Yeah.
And I'll do my best to kind of pull a variety and get them to early so you don't just have a week to account.
If you can pick Shalane what their process they did for that one-off.
And it has not been built, but it's like, I can find out what they did.
But also you can get numbers, you know, you can get numbers from the Shalane example that we can put into the collective.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And if we can get numbers like for the apartments that are being built now or like under construction in terms of the costs.
Like plugging that in to see like, at what point would it, could they have done this and and still made a profit?
Right.
Ooh, I like that. Use calculator.
Even though it's like There's not many more places left where that could happen, you know?
Nice.
So we're like.
But are you guys pretty much under in this, in agreement that this would really only work in commercial and multifamily?
Yeah.
I don't see where we would apply this in a single family, like the cottage housing, you couldn't, if you're doing six, you can't require one. There's no way it would pencil out.
Cor- correct.
Right, no.
But I also think this honestly would need to be a case by case basis for for us trying to solve every scenario in code.
No, but that's where I think you have to get to a threshold, like once you get to this many units, that's when this applies.
Yeah. And then maybe, I mean, that's what I'm really curious about the Shalane example, because we can, we have something in code that says when you get to X number of units. You have to do something and just leave it like sufficiently open-ended that.
Tough as a developer company.
Yeah, well, but if it, but if it's clear, like, once you hit this, five percent have to be affordable or or you pay this fee and this is how the.
The nice thing about the fee also is you don't have to get to a round number of units, right? You could have it just. You know, if it calculated out to a third of a unit, if it's just a financial thing.
I I was reading like. I don't know if it's federal way or I'll have to look, but I was trying to read through how they came out with that, what the fee would be. They took like what the cost of that unit would be to build and all the utilities and everything. And then they subtracted what it would be, what it would cost to rent and that came to like this amount. Differential, I don't. It was confusing to me, but they had a method and I was like, well, if you could come up with something that's very, a very clear method, like. This is my contract price, this is the utility price, this is what I would rent it for. And if I'm gonna make, and so this is what I'm gonna pay instead of.
If we just say. If you have more than fifteen units, then X percent has to be affordable or you pay a fee. And like, that's all there is in the code. People are gonna be like, well, I guess I'm only gonna build fourteen units, you know? Yeah, or not built, so that's why leaving, having something in there about this super open-ended like.
Hearing of some sort.
There can be incentives. But that is like at the discretion.
Oh, definitely.
Of staff, you know, so that they can be like, well, for this scenario, like this is the incentive I really want, that's gonna make it worthwhile for me. And then we figure out if that works, you know, and that or. Yeah, like, I'll do this, but only if you, you know, change across, like the streamlined processing.
So I think some of the ones I looked at today um have. You know, the big cities have those incentives built up, so it said like, this is what you're required to do, here's some incentives, we'll let you go X amount, this number of feet taller. We'll let you have this many more units, we'll let you.
But I'm saying, can we just not define the incentives?
I think it makes it too hard.
Because that.
I think we have to identify.
If in Shalane, they're doing it as.
I think that was one, like, a way. I I can't.
Because that's why, like, it would take us months to come up with all these incentives that will apply like twice in history in Leavenworth.
Yeah.
So it's like, do we really want to spend all that, you know? Like come up with all these really clearly defined things or just be like, super open-ended, like. Figure it out in like, when this comes up once in the next five years, you know?
But what if the incentive is just the ability to build? For the next number of units. And I would like to see it be quite low, but also maybe the. Price that we extract from them is not super significant. I don't know.
Good.
I'll pull examples, I'll talk to Shalan, I'll try to call some other jurisdictions that maybe. I'm working with, yeah. That have kind of even the, some of the same issues we have. Prices being very high, it being a very, I don't know, trying to find the perfect place.
Yeah. We we don't have many peer communities.
Well, there's lots of, but. I disagree, I mean, there's maybe mountain town in the west.
So let me do some digging. I'd like to get you at least the example, so our next, next meeting. Are we gonna? We're gonna have, try to hold the hearing.
Yes.
So we might not even get too much of a discussion, depending on how that goes, but I'll I'll put inclusionary zoning on there and we'll go through. What our thoughts were on the various topics, if we want to try to draft a code, well, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, is there still discussion next meeting, when I'm ready for any draft?
No, 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 it's just gonna be more of a, what we like to see in a code, like.
Yeah.
We want incentives, we want this.
Obviously, have some brainstorm amongst amongst ourselves and then we'll.
Still play with the calculator, cap time?
Yeah.
And I'll try to run through it with a a real life scenario here to show you like, had this been in place, this is what it would look like.
Yeah.
I think that helps people visualize it better, so.
Is there also an option after we look at? These things of not proceeding?
I mean.
As in our recommendation is do nothing because it's sort of futile.
I think we could minimally will be able to put a paragraph together that says.
This is why we decided to not recommend.
That's not my hope.
Or like, I mean, or it's.
I think even drafting, these are the, this is the process we went through. We've looked at this, we've looked at this, we've looked at this, this is kind of where we're at.
Right.
Um, we think this is a great tool. Have not found.
Once, once every.
I mean, it's a lot to have to deal with and we can't. You have to, there has to be subsidies to make things, I mean, there, it's a combination of things, this is not gonna solve it and it's. It may limit development too, which some people would think is.
Yeah, and but maybe it's if we do come back and say we can't solve this with our other resources, the council can come back and say we found. X grant money, go figure it out with this, so. Put it on that a little bit as well.
But I think just outlining what we've done, and so I have meeting minutes, I have agendas, I can say how many times we've talked about this. The different resources we used and we'll just kind of move from there, but I do, I don't want this to interest for moving forward on the docket to.
Yeah.
Getting more things done.
I I could see this being uh something of a Sisyphean uh task, so. Um, and and the reason I say I don't think there's many peer communities is because like, sure, there's, there's, you know, Tahoe, there's, you know, there's, there's all kinds of mountains, but they're not. They're not, you know, it at the, you know, the end of a valley with, you know, such a small confined area where our recommendations are applicable. So that that, cause I, I mean, I I have racked my brain trying to look into affordable and it's just, it's tough. It's just really tough.
Yeah.
I know that's not shocking news, but I have tried, I have been trying.
I find the most comparisons in Colorado and I think it is because they have.
Oh, you're right.
They have restrictions on the actual physical available land available as well as this like mountain town, second home owners. Expected.
Yeah.
Um, it seems the most relatable.
Any towns that's free, but you can think of that I could research.
Like Evergreen or something like a.
Older time.
I just like the one, I think it was outside, maybe it's till you're ready, it was like.
Mid colorism.
What's the one at um?
I don't know.
Ski town.
Yeah.
Every little town.
Okay.
But they made an agreement with the Forest Service and they were building. Affordable housing, like like workforce housing, basically like on Forest Service land through a partnership with the city.
That's fascinating, because they're usually not amenable to such things.
I mean, not not here.
Okay.
Not me, when I do yoga.
I see, okay, it's, yeah, well, and and there's.
There's also a report that went directly to this town, it's not buildable.
Right, right.
So that's also, but I just, you know, that, that was just an interesting, like. Oh, yeah, partnering with like other agencies because because.
Like the hundred-year lease thing, that kind of stuff.
Maggie, like.
Yeah, I think that's how they did it, they got like.
Like, like the little river near Crystal.
I totally ran him, I have no idea, but but Stovermont. New Jackson, Sun Valley or. Different, yeah, she most expensive town in the country.
Yeah.
But it's nice, I I just want to pull a variety.
Sure.
So.
Jackson has more flat land than.
Yeah.
And like hundred times more money.
Well, hey, I know.
County in the country, I think that, yeah, something.
When all the billionaires like to play there.
So I have seven right there on the list that I can try to pull. I can't guarantee they all have inclusionary zoning, but they do.
Dig a beat.
And and anything in Tahoe, they they have. They they have unique stuff there where they, you know. They have. Yeah, California and Nevada and they allow, you know, way higher stuff and it's just like. Economically, I think housing is probably similar, but. Uh, I think it's a totally different situation down there too.
Dallas is comparable.
It is nine oh three.
Miami.
Do what you like.
Went to entertaining emotions.
Wait, who's second?
Hey, guys, we started at seven oh three and ended at nine oh three.